Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Wilson Board School of Directors Regular Meeting for November. First thing, adjustments to the agenda. I think, Walter, you mentioned, did you mention something you wanted to?
Yes, under Discussion Matters, I want to talk about the Decision Packet Meeting right now, which is scheduled for December 12th. And what FAPAC has as a possible request about how they might either join in or sponsor a different one on a different date. So just what they've talked about a little bit and see what the board thinks about it.
All right, so I'll make that 5.4. Actually, I'll make a 5.5. 5.4, we'll do the FAP report. Does that sound good? So those are the two adjustments to the agenda. So 3.0, Audience and Communications. That was quick and easy. So let's get right to it. Presentations, Section 4, Co-teaching. Welcome.
Drum roll.
Drum roll.
So I've been invited to talk about co-teaching. And I always like to connect what we do with our guiding principles for intervention. And so it's really, starts with the guiding principles and moves to how we got to co-teaching. And I'll give you a little bit of background about how we got here, timeline, and where we are, current status, and also educate you a little bit about what co-teaching is. Many of you know a lot about it, but I'll get you a little bit up to speed. And we have co-teachers here, two, we call dyads, two sets of people that work together and co-teach together. So I'll have them introduce themselves to you later in the program. Okay? So, hit it. Let's just open up Guiding Principles if you click on there. I just, I shared this same document with you the last time when we talked about students with intensive needs. But that's what it is as soon as it comes into focus. Click on this so we can get the, yeah, okay, thank you. So yes, so the guiding, this is just the document that we use, and you can find it on the CSSU website. And I'll have bigger print in a few minutes. But this is, you know, it's the guiding principles and the instructional element. And collaboration and enclosive practices are two of the five, I think, guiding principles. So let's go to the next slide. Vanna, please.
All right, I have to go back to here.
Yeah, go back to School Board Presentation. Right there. There you go. Okay, now, next slide. Very good. Okay, so database decision-making is one of the guiding principles. I'm going to go through this really fast because I want to have time for these.
Are you guys all ready?
I'll just give you, yeah. Just so I'm going to have a chance for the real teachers to talk to you or to answer questions that you might have. That's a problem solving approach to decision-making. Student moves from one level of intervention to another. And I feel like I'm educating you, you know, from last month to, but we talked a little bit about the tiers. Tier one, tier two, tier three, tier three being special education, tier one being classroom teacher. And so these guys are a combination of tier one and tier three. Okay. Enclosive practice, we talked about last month also. We're looking at a clear connection between the instruction in tier one and tier three and tier two. And the classroom teacher maintains the primary role in the best inclusion models that we have. Expertise, the instruction is provided by the most qualified professionals for the given content area, which usually that, we think of that as licensed professionals. Collaboration, again, explicit coordination of instruction with the, with classroom instruction. So additional instruction is connected to classroom instruction, requires common structured planning time. We'll talk a little bit more about how we do that. And early intervention, that maybe isn't germane to this discussion, but it is one of our five principles and one of the top guiding principles for our school. And we're, that can be next one. Okay, thank you. So just to give you, can you click on here and go back to fullscreen? Great, okay. Just to give you an idea about where we've been, we did a faculty survey on April 12th of 2012. And then this was part of the study that we did on the guiding principles. We asked the Program Council, you all know what the Program Council is. We asked them to review how we were doing and with implementing guiding principles. And we took that feedback and, go ahead. And here's what the results of the study were. And again, this is connected to the guiding, especially the top four guiding principles we talked about. Database decision-making, the Program Council, the faculty and staff said that they felt that we were really strong in that area. We were looking at data, we're making decisions based on data. Inclusive practice, we heard that we need to improve the connection between the classroom and the extra support. Sometimes the classroom teacher didn't know what was happening, when the kid got pulled out, and vice versa. Expertise, we heard from the Program Council that the instructor is often, not always, but often, less qualified than they should be or could be. And then collaboration, we need to improve the connection between tier one and tier two and tier three. Here's the timeline. We did this, we studied the guiding principles in 2012. And then we looked at what could help us get, do better with implementing the guiding principles. Fall of, in the fall of 2012, which would be about a year from now, we put together a decision packet to talk about increasing special educators, increasing co-teaching. And the decision packet received very high marks. And it included some reallocation of dollars from non-licensed people and some additional funding, which the you guys approved and the voters approved. The budget was approved later than we wanted it to be approved, but it did get approved in the spring of 2012. And then summer of 2012, we, I think, all of you participated in the co-teaching course, some as instructors and some as participants. So let's, I just wanted to show you the, part of the syllabus for the co-teaching course. This was day two of, on July 11th. So the course was July 10th and July 11th. I think we had 15 people, 15 teachers sign up for it. And so they talked about personal norms, like what are their norms as a professional? And what, how do you connect your personal norm with your co-teaching, which is really important to establish trust and work together as a team? I like this a lot because, go to the choice. One of the choices we will talk about later, one of the types of co-teaching is stations, where you break the students into stations, three stations, four stations, two stations. So each of the station are small groups and with strategic plans for instruction, depending on the groups. And so they, this, the teachers modeled station teaching. So there were three possible stations in session A. So one of the instructors would do this, one instructor would do this, one instructor, and then they would rotate for session B. There you go, thank you. Okay. And in the exit survey, which they shared with me, that it was, I thought was really good, positive feedback, was, it was especially impressive that the teachers were teaching each other instead of somebody from outside that was clues about they, what their needs were and that kind of thing. So it was powerful. Okay, then back to fall of '23, we started the year with one special educator to four teacher ratio across the both schools. Okay? And I wanted to just plug this, I think I talked about, a little bit about this before. This is a statewide, statewide intervention, statewide system of support. And here's the field guide, and this is what's coming next. And it is really multi-tiered, we're a little bit ahead of the curve, I think, but it's really about multi-tiered systems of support. And the quote from the field guide that says, "A comprehensive systematic approach to teaching and learning designed to improve learning for all students through increasingly differentiated and intensified assessment, instruction, and intervention." I really feel like co-teaching helps to implement that. Right? Okay, thank you. So co-teaching is, you can think about the guiding principles and thinking about the needs that we had identified from the staff and faculty and Program Council. Co-teaching is instruction by the most qualified professional. Remember the highly qualified section of the guiding principles. Coordinate extra help with classroom instruction, so there's the collaboration. Maintain the classroom teacher in their primary role, that's inclusion. Support for accommodations and modifications from the licensed special educator. Oversimplification, but in general, the classroom teacher is the content person, special educator is the access person. Together they deliver the content, organize the instruction to benefit all students. Okay, here's the, you know, there's four or five different ways to look at the types of co-teaching. This is one that I pulled out for today, partly because I have a little bit of video that talks about parallel and stations. And so these are five. I'll talk with you a little bit more, but let's go to the video, please. Just click on the types of co-teaching. Wow, great. Okay, now, this is something that they used. Are you familiar with, these are pearls. It's called pearl trees. Anyway, I, okay. So, so there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pearls connected to the co-teaching tree. Pretty cool. So go to the Maryland Learning Links. So these, this is, the people that took the course could go to blogs and they could go to all kinds of things, you know, in their spare time. So let's see. Click on that, see where we go. Okay, now we need to go to full page, so scroll down here. Let's just hit this arrow right here. So scroll, so, and you'd click on the full page, you'll only see the full page, there we go. You're doing great. And then the video library. And then let's play this video. Go to fullscreen whenever you have a chance. Give them a, give us a little volume maybe.
My job is to find your feet, stuff's already out. Great. Roll over, hands.
It's really important that we work with each of the students because we want them to view us as equals in the classroom. So even though I am classified as the general educator in this classroom and Terry the special educator in the classroom, the students don't know the difference.
When deciding how we're going to be co-teaching different lessons, we really take into account the pacing of the unit, how far along we are, and how well we've gotten previous objectives.
So we really have to look at what our end goal is and what we think the best way is to get us there. My co-teacher and I have discovered that parallel teaching works really well for us because we have a very busy class and they like.
This is parallel teaching, one of the types that I'm going to talk about.
So we've been finding that if we split the groups up into two and we're teaching the same lesson at the same time, we're able to reach more of them, assess whether they're actually understanding it, and pull out some of those students who really don't like to speak as often, but probably know the answers and are a little shyer. So this way, everybody's getting the same lesson, they got that sort of teacher time that they need, and it's a great opportunity for us to see whether we're ready to move on from that skill.
All right, who's ready to carry this one? Ms. Brennan, are we about ready? Ms. Sharon?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right, who's our brave volunteer?
It helps us make sure that every single person at our individual station or cable understands what we're talking about.
Station teaching is basically just two different groups in our classroom. It can be more groups, but in our classroom, we stick to two different groups that either hit a different objective or a different activity for a certain objective.
You are going to get your pencil and meet me at the back table. If your name was not called, I think you need a pencil, Mr. Davis.
They, not in the cell.
We broke into our two groups and did all of our station teachings.
Just two groups.
Mr. DiMaggio worked on TIPS, the Multi-Signing Decimals, and then with me, they came to do the writing aspect in that at the end of groups, we switch. And then at the end of class, we usually try to either do some type of exit ticket or kind of assess how they're feeling with it.
We use station teaching because it provides that short break for students and it keeps the engagement level very high and provides that change, a chance to breathe and move on to something new.
That's good, thank you. Just pause it.
Today in the class, we were teaching two-digit.
Great. Let's go, let's go back to the School Board Presentation. Thanks. Okay. The one, the one thing that I would differ with the speaker on stations is that it's not really so much about, I mean, it is about getting kids break, but that's not the main reason for stations. We know the research tells us that if you, kids learn best when there's a strategic plan and it's a small group targeted instruction. So you can't get small group targeted instruction when somebody's standing in front of a class of 25. So that's a way to do that. And that's, so anyway. So there's one teach, one assist. A lot of times, you know, the person that's assisting is taking data. I think that's one of the best ways to use that. There's alternative teaching where you have a group of kids that are really struggling with a topic or a lesson. And so somebody does that alternative group or maybe pre-teaches prior to the full lesson. And then team teaches when the people that are working, just they finish each other's sentences, you know, that kind of thing. So there's, there's, I have a preference about parallel and station teaching because you can do a better job of breaking the students into groups for targeted instruction. But they, they're all good for various reasons at various times. Research, they did a meta-analysis, this was in 2007, but the research shows that collaboration between general and special educators benefits the quality of instruction and supports for students with disabilities. There's no question about that, for all those reasons we've talked about. But also, we, the research finds that students without disabilities benefit too. These are among the findings of a meta-synthesis of co-teaching research conducted by these researchers. So here's where we are, current status, and then I'll give a chance for you guys to ask some questions if you have any. You probably recall FAP sponsored a presentation by me and the faculty. I probably should capitalize faculty if I'm going to capitalize director, right? No. Director and faculty to the school community, May of last year. Fifteen teachers were trained last summer using a course designed by classroom teachers and special educators. We have now 33 teachers that have been trained as of today. And we're working on a plan for additional trainings. I've had a lot of classroom teachers especially requesting, how do we get training? So.
So 33 teachers out of how many, what percentage of trained teachers do we have?
A third.
How many do we have?
You have about 100, so.
A third?
Third, right.
And is it like, sorry, is it evenly distributed between both schools or is it mainly Williston Central or?
Both schools. So in fact, we have kindergarten teachers here, special educator, teacher, and seventh and eighth grade. So they're both ends of the spectrum. I don't know exactly, I think that it's pretty even between the schools. Can you say it? Okay, why don't you guys mind introducing yourselves and tell the board what you, where you teach, what you do, and then you guys can ask questions.
I'm Kristin Hebert, I'm a special educator at Williston Central. And I teach, I'm a seventh and eighth grade special educator and I co-teach with Deborah Lantini. And we've done this for two years now, but we've worked together for a very long time.
Now there.
Yep, and I'm Deborah Lantini, and I teach on Harbor House, seventh and eighth graders, language arts.
We had, these guys were, I think we had three dyads at the May 13th workshop, and I don't know how many people, parents we had saying, I want to change my place since I went with these guys. They really work well together and they present well, so anyway. We didn't make those changes, but it was nice to get that feedback.
I'm Laura Dyer, and I teach kindergarten. I'm a classroom teacher.
Heather Wood. I'm Heather Wood, I'm technically a speech-language pathologist, that's what my licensure is. My other hat is as a special education case manager. This is actually the second year that I've done this, and I co-teach with Laura, but we also co-teach with another classroom teacher, Sarah Reed. So we actually combine both classes and split it among three individuals for primarily reading instruction.
Yeah, I guess just anecdotally from you guys, this has been a pretty big change, you know, from where we were at just last year and the year before. How are the, how's everybody taking to it? Are the kids taking to it? Are the parents, I mean, the parents with some serious concerns and, you know, is there, has there been a good transition or you're still having, I'm just curious.
It's up and down, you know, it has some big challenges. You know, I teach, I have in my class about close to 100 language arts students. And of those, about a little less than a quarter of them have special needs in literacy. So in order to make this work, co-teaching, we've pulled those kids together into one class. So, you know, we used to do, in the past, I'd have those students in my four different language arts classes spread out and maybe have a paraeducator in each classroom. So there would be two adults, but it would be, it would be me and a paraeducator. Now I have Kristin in one class and all the kids with needs, and we've pulled in a couple of paraeducators also. So we have four adults. And then we do a lot of the different strategies that are up there. So on, it's a different allocation of resources.
Yeah, I think in some respects, it's been really great. I think last year, working together, it was a lot of Deborah instructing and me assisting because we were, we were working together in that way for the first time and we were learning each other and how to function in the classroom. As a seventh and eighth grade special educator, I think the most important thing is developing the relationships with the kids. It tends to be, you know, the, sort of the difficulty when kids either don't see you as a teacher and therefore you have less of the respect, or who are you and why are you here and that kind of a thing. So, so I worked closely with many of those students as seventh graders. Now many of them are, well, they're eighth graders now. And, and so now I have relationships with all those kids and they see me as a teacher and I feel respected and sought out instead of repelled, which had been an issue. So in those respects, you know, that's been really nice. I think that's been really helpful for the kids. I love, you know, being able to just see all of the kids working together. You know, I, for 20 some years have been a special educator and, and you know, your lens gets cloudy when you're, when the students that you see are the lowest achievers. And, you know, I could come and say, oh, this is so exciting. No, no, it's not really because now I have a clearer picture of what the end game or the end result could or should look like. And so that's been really enlightening and helpful for me. But then there's, you know, there's always those logistical things. And like Deborah and I were talking in the car on the way over, you know, it's not a silver bullet, it doesn't cure everything. You know, it's not the right fix for every kid or every situation. But I do see some really positive things out of it.
You want to go to the five-year-olds from the 14-year-olds?
It's obviously really different in kindergarten, but I know that overall, I think we're feeling like it's been really successful, really nice, kind of in all aspects of what we're doing. It's really nice for the colleagueship, both between Heather and I, but also connecting with another kindergarten classroom and really knowing what we're doing and be able, being able to plan together and bounce ideas. And I really feel like our, our classroom instruction has improved greatly by having another professional who can be part of those decisions. And we've used lots of different models too and have mostly been using it for foundations with letters and sounds. And I think it has benefited all of the kindergarten students. And I think parents are really happy that we're able to do a lot more differentiating and meet everyone's needs. So I feel like it's, it's going really well. I think we wish that we could take that snippet of the day and spread it through the whole day. Like if we could only have this model for math and for, you know, every part of the day, really.
And if I can't do, sorry.
You want to act, no, I can run this thing halfway.
I can, I can answer that. In order to fully implement it, we would have to have one special educator for every teacher, and that would be four times what we have now. So I just don't think it's, it's practical from the budget, a budget standpoint. We could do more reallocation, but, you know, of non-licensed people, and we'll look at that, but, you know, I, one to four is a, is a pretty good ratio. I mean, I'm happy about that. If you guys want to try to convince me to double the special educators, I'd be willing to listen.
So then how functionally, let's say, a child has deficiencies with math as opposed to the language arts? How do you deliver special ed to those students with problems with math as opposed to language arts?
I can answer that.
Sure.
We've been, like all things, really creative. We have other support teachers in, within the building that were supporting tier-two level kids. And I understand you know what that means.
They're getting there.
So that teacher and one of our special educators co-teach a class. And they take groups of kids and they co-teach together. And that's been meeting some needs for this sort of bubble in our population. But, you know, it's, it's a lot on that particular special educator and it's, you know, it's not the same thing to be a special educator in the upper house as it is to be in the lower house. So I guess my bias because of where I am is that, you know, there, there are, it's more complex and the needs are more complex at the upper house. So, and I don't think that they, you know, can be as easily met those needs in, you know, in a whole group setting. But my hope, like visions for the future, is that because we're doing this with the younger kids and they're getting those, those, what they need and the better instruction and those kinds of things, that we'll have fewer, you know, through attrition and we'll be doing a better job every year.
Yeah, and can I?
Let's let Heather speak first because, you know, I heard her say that her job is much more complex than yours is.
It's just very different. In kindergarten, we don't have a lot of children who are identified with needs. Like we're still figuring out what is truly them coming in with different backgrounds, you know, and what's, what's lack of exposure versus what is truly going to show up as a disability in, you know, in second or third grade. So I think for us in kindergarten, it's just, it's really a big problem solving. We spend a ton of time saying, well, I didn't, he didn't get this, well, what do you think about that? And it's just, it's a lot of problem solving, I think, for us that in kindergarten is really working. I think we're just able to make changes a little bit faster than, you know, waiting till an EST happens or whatever, because we do have the constant presence in the classroom. As far as the impact, I think the original question.
As far as the impact, I think the original question had been the impact of, on all kids with regards to the staffing changes. We did, we have seen, I mean, in kindergarten where tying shoes and going to the bathroom and learning how to line up and, you know, there are some of those things that you do need those extra sets of hands for, so in some cases we have felt a little bit of that pull in, you know, who's going to make sure that the kids aren't running out of the room while the other kids are on their lockers trying to fit themselves into the lockers? You know, so there's, there is that piece of it that we're still trying to muddle through, but I think next year, as kindergarten teachers, we'll be able to have a better idea of how this is impacting because this year we have such small classes. So, what's going to happen when we go from fourteen to eighteen kids, I think we'll see a little bit more how this is going to, going to sugar off for us.
Uh, I, the one thing I wanted to say is when we think about allocation, like one special educator to four teachers, I wonder if it may be, uh, you know, it, it might be important to think about allocation as the special educator for the kids with needs because it's out of balance a little bit, you know, because they're being a special, and I'm speaking on behalf of, of Kristin here, I know because as a special educator, for every student that's on an IEP, there's, you know, a stack of paperwork and there's assessing and all going on, so she's co-teaching with this big caseload and doing all that paperwork, so it's not really like, you know, she's going to be there in every, you know, one quarter of every class that happens in our team, you know, to be with the kids whenever they have needs.
One of the needs that have been identified also is, uh, a, uh, time to plan, just time, you know, nobody has extra time sitting around, so. Right, um, and a lot of, uh, these guys use Google Docs to, the teacher puts the curriculum on the Google Doc and this, this oversimplification again, and then the special educator might group the kids, you know, on the Google Doc and, and then they can have conversations so when they, they hit, can hit the ground running with maybe a five-minute, uh, conversation before class, uh, because it's to have, uh, an hour of FaceTime, uh, every week uninterrupted, maybe is n-not going to happen, we'd like to have, have it happen, but. So, the other things that we've talked about doing is, uh, you know, do some after-school time where they have, uh, fewer duties, you know, so they can do their planning then, so. That's it. That continues to be a struggle and something that these guys tell me about.
I was just curious about how you go about choosing which model delivery for co-teaching, whether it be parallel, stations, one-on-one, is, I assume that's a collaborative approach, but if there's difference of opinions, how do you go about resolving those and?
Do kindergarten guys want to answer that first?
Yeah, for us, we use, in just a half an hour, I think we use three, yeah, probably three different kinds. There's one teach and two assist and then we do stations or we do, yeah, parallel. And then we do stations and some, on some Thursdays we do stations. So, it's, it's a little bit muddy, like we do have one day where there's two of us go to one classroom and the kids stay and then we move to the other classroom, the teachers trade, um, that would be the station, then the parallel is the regular, when we split them up into the three groups and we're all working on the same thing, so it, it depends on the needs.
We talked about the kids' needs and what parts of the things we are doing in the curriculum, what that looks like for kids who are struggling through it, so there's, you know, one day where we do, it sounds really simple, it's really hard for some of these kids. They match letters by sounds to, you know, along the alphabet and for kids who don't, aren't identifying their letters, um, to then find a letter based on its sound when they don't know what letter it is, is, you know, they're not getting much out of that time in class. So, we've talked about, you know, instead of just kind of having them there while we do that and then get pulled out to have that instruction more privately, we did like the teach and assist where one of us is running the lesson and the other one has those three kids right here to be able to help and have the cards to show and, and assist that, so that has been really successful and like you said, the needs kind of look a little bit different in the younger grades in that way.
I also think it depends on what you're doing and what curriculum you're using, you know. Last year, you know, um, we didn't use as much technology. This year, we've been using a little bit more technology and so when we decide our groupings, you know, some of that is based on, you know, we have some paraeducators and so really what we need them to do is really monitor and make sure that kids, when they're looking at the screen, are actually doing something and not just waiting for the time to tick by, difference between the ages, you know, um, and so we need someone who's going to monitor, make sure they're on there, not having technical problems, make sure the headphones are working, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, those are the paraeducators are doing. And then when Deborah and I take a group, either, you know, mostly it's been we, you know, I take a group, she takes a group, so that's parallel, but then, you know, the other kids are sort of in a station and then they switch and they come to one of us. So, those kinds of decisions really aren't, um, they're really more driven by, you know, we're looking at the data all the time and saying, you know, are they getting enough time, um, one-on-one, are they making enough progress? I look at the computer programs that they're supposed to be on and, you know, with the number of students we're monitoring and kids are out sick or, you know, this or that has happened and so they weren't in class and making up time. So, it's constant flexible groupings of, you know, these kids, we need to group over here, but for this week, let's do this and next week, let's move the kids around and do this and, and then, and there's also different reasons for that. We also don't want them to start identifying themselves, "Oh, I'm with this group of kids" and that kind of thing, so.
And we've never had a disagreement where we couldn't, you know, it wasn't like, "No, I think I should do it this way." It's more like, "Yeah, great idea, oh, how can we do it?"
Yeah, and let's try and let's see how it goes and, you know, so that's never, that's never been a, an issue.
Is there anything that you guys would need from school board that would help you work?
I, I, I'll think about that allocation piece, I mean, because it's, you know, that's a big piece for us.
It's a lot of work.
It is, and it, and it, when it, you know, that it works is great and it's worth the work, but we want to make sure that we can do it without being spread too thin.
The other thing is it's November and we're still, you know, a little bit, got a little pep in our step, we'll see how we're doing in June. You know, I, it's, um, there's a, there's a lot of different little pieces to juggle, but, um, I think the greatest thing for me personally has been just the connection with the kids and, um, feeling really like a part of the team and feeling like, you know, I don't know.
The students probably feel part of the team because they're not pulled out.
They do, they do.
That's the key of it.
Yeah.
All those relationships that you're building with them.
And maybe, um, I guess just like you said, thinking maybe a little bit more flexibly about, um, that spread-too-thin piece and like if this is, if we can show you that co-teaching is really successful, when you look at the data from the kids in our classes, like if it's truly different, um, and it's meeting their needs, what are ways that we can support, um, those relationships and the time to plan and, and maybe more time in the classroom, like somehow finding more time for those special educators to be in the classroom, um, numbers-wise, because I think that's our biggest, um, what we're doing is really successful, but we have these other classrooms and other children whose needs and services need to be met, um, and that's really taking away from the amount of co-teaching that we're able to do.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, all those people who want to get trained, it's, I think they want that relationship, but there has to be, for every classroom teacher that gets trained, there has to be another special educator to make it really work.
And it's not, I, I don't think it's something necessarily that develops right away. I mean, it's kind of a dance.
Well, on average, we have one special educator for every four teachers, right? Yeah, but all the teachers aren't trained. I think all the special educators are trained now. Maybe one of the new hires is not trained, all the special educators are trained.
For instance, if one of my colleagues goes to the training and he can be a special, you know, he can work with a special educator, but I don't know where we'll find that time for, for Kristin to get into his classroom, you know, because she's already got her day packed.
Different teams do it different ways. Some, uh, special, sometimes a special educator will work with, uh, uh, one math class, one LA class, one science class, one, you know, so, or sometimes they will, like in the three, fours, they tend to do a little bit more co-teaching, this is third grade, fourth grade, a little more co-teaching in math. That's an area of need that they have and so they'll do maybe two classrooms of math and two classrooms of LA or, you know, so it's, it's, they do it differently and, and so, but we have, so we have one special educator and four teachers and the teachers are teaching all the time, so you could only cover a quarter of the classes and then the special educators have to do paperwork and assessment and that kind of thing, so.
So, let me ask you this another way, so is there really happening co-teaching throughout the entire school?
There's one pair for every house within Williston, starting in kindergarten, all the way up through the system.
One pair?
One pair, in other words, there's one co-teaching pair in every single house from kindergarten up to eighth grade, every house. And they're all trained? That one pair is trained and working in each house, pretty much? Yeah, and that's what we were shooting for to start with is to introduce the concept of co-teaching on every house. And you're, and so your challenge is going to be, yes, you need to train the rest of the teachers, the gating factor would be the one special educator that's available to that team of teachers and where their time is best used. Right, I think the other thing that was already mentioned is co-teaching is not right for every student. I understand that. So, that you, also decisions have to be made about where it would be most appropriate and when, when you have this resource and you're trying to figure out logistics of, okay, where, where is this going to be best served for students? I mean, that's the other challenge that we're going to have.
So, and, you know, if we're ready at some point to expand it, then we'll have to do it, you know, we'll have to do it based on the data that we're collecting now and what grade levels would work best because, you know, we, we just won't be able to do four special educators for every four teachers, that's just, that's just, we just won't be able to do that. But, but we have to decide strategically when we, if we take this further. I, I'm very excited that we're doing what we're doing, really excited and it's cutting-edge stuff and we're getting great data and, uh, s- teachers are, and special educators are so excited that they're in the class and we don't have to pull those kids out to get instruction and we can do pre-teaching instead of post-teaching, the stuff that they didn't get in class, we can do pre-teaching, so when they get the instruction, they already have these hooks to hang on the new instruction, so. I'm really excited about the direction that we're going, uh, but, you know, there's plenty of bumps.
So, I just have one last question. So, with regards to, in order to be able to, in the future, hopefully, be able to get additional support for increasing our number of, um, paraeducators and co-teaching throughout, we will need to prove that it's working, right? So, you are gathering all this data. So, when, when will that data become available to be able to support the request for additional resources?
So, it's available now. I mean, you know, I, I think that, uh, because we just started with, uh, you know, one, the four-to-one ratio, uh, I'm, you know, we're collecting the data all, all the time, uh, you know, it's pretty early to, you know, it's, it's November, but, you know, we, we have data and we're looking at the comparisons now. There's, you know, all kinds of different ways to look at it, numbers of kids who, um, you know, become eligible for special education, scores, uh, test scores from kids that are not on the caseload and are on the caseload. I, I feel like, I mean, before we make a reasoned decision, we probably should have a year of data.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to say and.
Thank you for being here.
Wave to the camera. Hope you get out of here early, still going for eight-thirty.
Going for it.
He asked a lot of questions.
Yeah.
We're good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do, uh, reports to the board.
So, I, this is Principal's report and I, um, what you don't know is that Jack Clark's mother died weeks ago suddenly. Was not expected, it was, uh, side effects from an operation and so that's why there wasn't another report included. So, I sat down with him, we went through some things, I'm not going to read it all, but I'll point out some highlights so you know that. So, um, the back-to-school expo, the, we know we didn't have the kind of turnout we wanted, but the, the input we got from parents was unbelievably positive. And so, what we're looking at for next year is attaching it on to like a curriculum night, so that you would start with the expo and then go to your houses afterwards, and we think that that would bring in a lot of people. But people love the format, the, you know, kind of walk and talk and the, the brief kind of presentations, I mean, it was really, I read the input, it was just amazing how positive it was. So, that, and the format was good, I think everything worked the way we thought it would work. There were four of us that sat down, you know, and kind of planned out the, what it would look like.
I think you guys did a great job.
Incredibly well organized.
And I think that was a combination of FAPAC and school personnel sitting down and brainstorming, what could it look like, right? And the potluck and the whole thing, but, um, I think that was, I mean, it was really positive, I, and it's nice to see that. The idea that the stand-up twenty-minute presentations too, where you stand, you don't sit in chairs and listen, you're actually having a conversation as the presenter's in front of you. That was, I, and I did one, that was kind of fun, I have to say that. It was really a conversation, not a lecture. You know, people were just asking questions and what about this and they liked the idea of being in front of the tables, not having something separate the faculty and the faculties also liked it because they said, "We never get a chance to talk to parents and talk about our programs," you know, because they're always going to the classroom. So, there was a lot of positive comments on both sides.
I think you hit something great there.
We just, well, we, in the process, uh, FAPAC just approved the grant of a 3D printer for our tech ed program, which would be great. We have the CAD software that already will run it and so Michael Thomas is really excited about this and, um, beginning by offering it to Spark students and then spreading to the classroom once he kind of learns about it, but that's something brand new for us to, to have for technology. We have new hours at WCS, we are now, um, have the nurse on until four-thirty, which is when our classes get out and the office is open till five o'clock, which is when the buses pull out because we have a lot of people in the building now, you know, and that's what we're planning to do. We, we're staying open to have school till four-thirty at least. And so, um, we have a lot of kids that are staying now and we're just saying, "We're open, we're open till four-thirty and five o'clock on the office," so they can hear anything going on in the buses.
Yeah.
That is great.
Very good.
And, um, the after-school Spanish class has started, we have five students in it right now, but we wanted to get it started because we know, just like Spark, it will grow. Once people begin to talk about, "It's a really fun time, you know, things are happening," that it will grow and we'll have more students by the end of the year and that's what we think will happen. What, what we look at is, it, it is really groundbreaking, it's the first time that a regular class is being offered at after-school. That's never happened before. And so, what we'd love to do is see this be very successful and be able to grow it and have more things that are from three to four. The one thing you might not know is we supply snacks for every single student that stays after-school for academics. We have snacks for them, it's part of our program. The other thing is for the first time in the Spark program that any student in grades five through eight can sign up for a Spark enrichment cycle and it's all, all online, you know, and it's through the bell, so they just get on, their parents can sign them up, we have a list going and then we, on Thursdays when we have different offerings, they get put in, as many as we can put in, so that it's a real mixed group. And I think we have at least six offerings this next cycle coming up, so.
So, children pay, but it's, it's an online?
No, 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 they register online.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And then it's timestamped.
I see, I see.
So, it's timestamped, then we know exactly when they approved it. And then we look at, we put the Spark kids in their positions first, but we have extra slots now, we have more teachers offering different things now. And then we look at, we put the Spark kids in their positions first, but we have extra slots now, we have more teachers offering different things now. And then we pu- can take in as many other ones as the slots were allowed, we're still keeping the classes very small, we don't like to go above six. This is very personalized instruction.
So what's the participation rate for the, uh, the enrichment students?
We had, um,
Are, are, are people responding?
Oh yeah, we had thirty-two people sign up, the first time we put it out there, we had thirty-two other kids sign up, beyond Spark. So, and, and what they do is there's a listing of what kinds of activities, so they can also kind of rate it in what order you would like to have it. And then we do the best we can to match it, we can't match it all the time, but we can at least tell them, you know, you can do this or you can do this. So that's it, I mean, oh, the last thing is the science consultant work that we put in the budget, so the consultant is now hired, it is Jean Ward out of Manchester, Vermont, who is a science specialist, she is coming in December to have um, a couple of days of just pure training with all the science teachers in grades five through eight. And then she is individually going to go into each one of their classes, observe lessons and co-teach with them, with the idea of embedded, um, indivi- individualized professional development in science with a specialist. And that will go on, um, throughout the rest of the year. And so it'll be very specific instruction, very individualized instruction for every science teacher we have in middle school. Okay, so that's, that's it, those are the highlights.
That's exciting stuff, yeah.
Thank you, uh, CSSU debrief, um, a couple of things, if I can remember here. Have to look the number up specifically, but, uh, so, the big thing at the CSSU, if you didn't attend, was the, uh, common topic on uh, American healthcare reform. This was, for me, eye-opening, I thought I knew a lot about what was happening, I now know I don't know half of what I thought I knew, and half would be a, a nice way of saying it. Um, so, I, I, I would encourage you to go, uh, uh, watch that if you, uh, if you can find the time. I thought Laura was really informative. We, um, uh, saw, saw the, uh, uh, core budget and decision packets, uh, mostly around, discussion around CY funding. So the big thing that happened last year with CY funding is that it got consolidated at the CSSU level, if you recall, and then there, what you may not recall was that there was some discussion and decisions made about how to allocate that back, because it's really used from the five twelve, but it had, you know, the allocation started out being K twelve and and, and so there were discussions between how much the high school should contribute versus the other schools, and so there was a rebalancing, basically, and, um, although I don't recall individually each school, I can tell you that the ba- the rebalancing works out that we will see a net increase of about five or six thousand dollars on top of our last year's of last year's number that we had in the budget, I think that's what it was.
So I beg, I vaguely recall from last year there was, um, a grand bargain, if you will, with
It was the halfway bargain, yes.
Yeah, how?
So that, that, that's factored into that equation and, and will continue to roll, roll out, I believe, so that they saw, they saw a net decrease, a large net decrease in their amount that they are gonna be allocated, because they're only gonna pay half of what they were, right? I believe, it's really a bit confusing, but they're, but, but in a
So they're not gonna
Well, they're gonna pay less than what they, they, they're gonna pay less than what they were going to be allocated, because when we moved the allocation from K to twelve up to five to twelve, it bumped up how much more nine to twelve would pay. And they said, that's a big, that's a big jump for us, so can we make a deal and only pay for half of that, so in effect, one way of looking at it is that our net increase of about five thousand dollars is perhaps contributing towards the less that they're paying this session.
So we're gonna pay more or less, I guess?
We're gonna pay slightly more.
You and Shelburne have the least net change.
We have the least net change, yeah.
So is CDU going to be taking on a larger share or a smaller share?
Smaller, apparently.
A smaller share.
Even though
Yeah.
So, here's the way I get my little head wrapped around it, is for years it was done based on student population, that was, it had nothing to do with the level of services, except for Williston has traditionally kicked in more for their mentoring program. So backing that out a little bit, back that out. The, um, new model is more of, these are the services you're getting, so we're gonna charge you the cost of the services, much more like the purchase service model. So Bob and Christine can do a much better job explaining the whole shift. But that's how I got conceptually my head around it, so for you all, you've been paying closer to your share all along. Whereas Charlotte and Heinsberg have gotten more services than they may have been paying for, and the high school's been kind of caring people. One, Jean might put it that way anyway.
Will the high school be taking less services, or is it just gonna be paying a proportional share of the services that it receives?
They will pay for their share of the services, but that will be a net reduction for them overall. They don't have a mentoring program, for example.
It is very confusing, but it's
It's the population that uses it the most.
Not necessarily, if you look at the services.
The actual fact is that they That's not necessarily the case.
They have one point oh, for example, just do SAP, because that one I can do on my head, SAP, they have one SAP. Um, S- Williston has point six, Heinsberg has point five, Shelburne has point fo- four, Sh- Charlotte has point four. Why they're at that number, who knows? But this at least gets you paying for your point six, they pay for their point four. And then if you say, you know, you want another day of service, much like if you want another day of service as a school psychologist, then we up your contribution. And then there's all the grant pieces.
The revenues, revenues that come in on grants and stuff, so, so to, to net it all out for Williston, it ends up being a slight increase in the amount that will be charged from the CSSU for the service. And it, it's relevant because tonight we're going to be adopting all, we're going to be, uh, appro- well, all right, yeah, we are, yeah, we're gonna be approving the services that we're going to take from the CSSU, and that's one of them. So, you know, it's, that's, that's why you need to know. Yeah, um, and then, um, the other interesting thing that came out of the uh, CSSU was the adoption of the audits, the audits were reviewed and adopted. And, uh, everything was, looked like it was great, very great, uh, very good, and the thing that, uh, was the most interest to me was the reporting of the general fund balances. When did we win the lottery? Our general fund balance is at what, four fifty-two? I didn't, I thought it was much lower than that.
It was much lower than that too.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the number that I had in my head, but the, our fund balance, I'll, I can, it's, it's in the thing there. Yeah, it's in the SU packet, if you have it in, in paper, it's, uh, it's, uh, in the full packet, there's just a one-page audit summary. And, uh, this came as a rather pleasant surprise.
So in other words, we have more, uh, funds to transfer over at the end
Yeah.
towards next year's budget.
That's a, potentially, yes, if that's how we choose to use it.
Or capital.
Or cap- for capital, for capital revisions for rainy day, you know, it's something we have not had the ability to really discuss, because we didn't really have that much to talk about.
Well, we haven't yet seen our budget.
Exactly, so I wouldn't exactly spend it, so to speak. Well, and quite honestly, we've discussed for years that our general fund balance has been proportionately very low for the size of our budget in school. It's not still, it sounds like a large amount of money, but it's still, you know, on a seventeen million dollar budget, you know, with a lot of potential capital things, it's, you never know. So, it's good to see it's growing. It's still not, it's by far not the largest in the SU, but it's, it's healthy. Uh, I think things like, uh, allocations from the town and, uh, uh, expenses that, uh, unent- you know, underruns even, you know, stuff that comes, that gets, get pulled back from the general, you know, from last year's budget goes into the general fund to be reallocated next year.
And we, the board has stopped, um, offsetting taxes. It was a time when it was a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was being used out of the general fund to reduce taxes, and when it got low,
We stopped doing it.
Stopped doing that, so we were running surpluses every year.
And, and, and in my, my opinion, intentionally, that's, that's, you know, you need to have that reserve. Yeah, so that's the CSSU debrief. Uh, did I miss anything?
And new auditors, right?
And, yeah, and new auditors, yeah, were voted at the last meeting, so they'll be starting the next audit. Okay? Uh, first quarter financial management report is in your package. So if there's no questions there, I
I, I don't know if that includes the, uh, comments on the food service? Or is that a separate item? I, I recall looking at my board packet, there was, um,
Thirty-seven thousand?
There, there may be a request essentially for a seventy-five percent increase in the general fund allocation, and I, I just, I'm, I'm going to be looking at that personally skeptically, without, unless there's some explanation as to why, and how we can get th- these cost overruns under control. It just seems like it's a, um, a deep pit or hole that we, um,
We worked ourselves hard working out of it, and now we're finding ourselves going there again, so.
Well, I think a, a big reason why this is, is because we have not increased the cost of food in I don't know how many years. And then there's more people eating, needing, needing, um, free lunch, right?
Well, I guess that, that's the kind of analysis I would, I would like to see.
Yeah, that's, that's anecdotal, so I, I, I agree with you, Josh, I'd like to see the hard numbers, I'd like to understand why the increases are coming in from what, where in the program and
The rates did go up this year, they did go up this year, across the board. Students, adults, milk, everything that is up in the program went up this year.
And, and there may be explanations for it, but I, I need to understand those explanations.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, if, if you're gonna, if, if we're gonna need to make that kind of a large increase in that line item.
So you need a lot of, um, information before.
I really do.
And I know that, uh, Bob would, talked about with us today, and he's gonna put together a decision packet, we can just tell him that it's gotta be a very clear explanation as to
Right.
what is causing the fact that we have to do this.
It, yeah, even more so if we better take some action this year to make it, you know, make it work, we, we want to discuss this sooner than later.
Yeah.
And at the same time, I, I mean, I wanna, I guess, always support that I think it's great that our school district makes food available for those in need, and I know around the country, that's not always the case, and, um,
Asking the question, is it an indictment of the program, right?
Exactly, yeah.
No, and I, yeah, um, in gen- in general, restaurants go out of business. Unless, um, you can buy other beverages with your meal, they would all go out of business, that's where the money is made. It's not the food, but we can have a fuller explanation of what is the free and decent lunch count look like and what about the subsidies from the government, things like that.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Good.
And I think it will come during budget season, I think really is when it'll come, when you're looking at it, because the only time it can be changed really is either the end of the year or budget season for the next year, so, it'll come up.
Right, okay. So, uh, Dev F, if you record?
Just quickly, so we're hosting, um, a Thai style apple. And this is lovely, I've heard, and the family that is hosting her is loving it.
That's great.
But their time's up.
Oh.
Um, mid-December, so they're looking for other host families, and I think Jackie was originally thinking a two-month host. Um, but she said she's also willing to think of a one-month host, so it's something to consider, until the end of the year.
When do they need someone?
Uh, I think mid-December.
Mid-December?
Is when she's leaving.
I think they have somebody right now, I think somebody came forward. Just so you know, I'll check with Jackie first, if you're interested, because I think, um, one of the the teachers fan, uh, came forward and said they could stay, she could stay with them for at least a couple of months, I think.
Oh, okay.
But they're gonna need more people.
Okay.
And then the other thing, they had, uh, FAP worked through the grants, they had eighteen thousand dollars worth of requests. And so they honored nine thousand, which is huge, and some really exciting things, and I think the three D printer is gonna be amazing.
Wow, who's getting that?
Mike Thomas.
Vic Thomas?
I, uh, yeah.
Isn't that great?
It's exciting. So, um,
I wanted to come play.
Thanks to the grant committee on all that work.
That's great that the FAP could do that.
And then the book fair, uh, the eleventh to the fifteenth.
Yeah, I was there the other night.
Big fundraiser.
They were doing a great job, it was really nice.
So how is their, um, participation?
Um, for what?
For, uh, funding, like, parents paying?
It's slowly improving and they are, keep, they keep getting the word out, but I think they've had trouble.
They're still struggling?
Yeah, and it seems like a very small amount of money, but it's, it's not. So, we're working with what we've got.
Well, great, well, pass on our thanks from the board for those, uh, grants, that's wonderful, and, uh,
Great things, you can look at the list, if you go to the website and FAP, like, what they approved is there, and, um, some great speakers, trying to think what else, lots of, lots of really innovative things.
Cool, great, uh, Walter, you, you had a, one final item for, uh, reports, uh, oh, the, uh, December twelfth FAPAC, so, yeah, I know, maybe before we go any further on, let's talk about the date first and then maybe the participation issue, you wanna do that? So, it looks like December twelfth is, is not gonna work as the, as the date to hold that meeting. Because both Elaine and Bob can't be there, and I can't be there, although that isn't necessarily required, it would be kind of nice. So, I'll be, uh, out of town for the first half of December, I'm gonna be stuck in California, so, um, we're looking at the nineteenth, yeah, which is, I think, a Thursday.
It's also a Thursday, so I think hoping that can work.
The, the issue is that for Bob and I, there are meetings every single night.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, even though like Bob doesn't do negotiations, you're here for negotiations. So you know what I mean, there's not, there really isn't a night, so the nineteenth is open for Bob.
It's not a happy conversation with my employer. Pulled that one on me.
Yeah, so would that work for the rest of you guys, the nineteenth?
Yeah, because I don't think it conflicts with
It does not, that's why we
That's why it can work, yeah, so, yeah.
Nineteenth of what?
December.
December, yes.
It's a Thursday, it's the following Thursday, you would have been on the twelfth.
That's right, so it's a, it pushes it out one week.
And for purposes of quorum, just to let you know, I'm gonna be out of town on the twenty-first, so I won't be able to attend.
So it's confirmed on the nineteenth or not?
Yes, if you guys agree it's confirmed, because Bob, Bob and I have already talked.
There's a CSSU
So December nineteenth at four thirty, is that right?
Yes.
At WCS.
And, uh, you said the twenty-first budget meeting is the one you will not be in touch?
Yeah, yeah, I'm out of town.
Okay, thanks, sorry Walter to hijack you there, but
The FAP is looking to, um, maybe piggyback onto the board meeting and do the decision packets, they do it during the day on December fifth, but the, they, they know that this is gonna be a draw item. And so they were going to either do something on the night of September fifth, which invite community members and other parents who couldn't attend the daytime meeting, and it would be very similar to what we do where you listen to the presentations, you read through them ahead of time, that sort of thing, and then you get a chance to say, of all the things, what do you think is important? Or, they could, um, try to tie on to your regular four thirty meeting and invite parents and community members to attend that presentation, either way. And I don't know if the board has a preference, I just said I would bring it to you.
I, I'm gonna give my opinion, I think those meetings are so complex, there are budget meetings, just to understand what we're reviewing, that, you know, they're open to the public to begin with, right? But just adding more to it, I don't know about that, I'm sorry.
The only thing it adds is people, it's the same presentation.
It's the same presentation, they get the same thing in FAP in the morning, so I'd like to see it together, 'cause I think that builds community.
But will we, just, the, the decision-making paradigm, because I find it helpful to have that information before I have to make a decision. So will the timing be that we'll have the benefit, like you put this great, uh.
The grid up.
Grid up. Will we have that in advance of the decisions that we need to make as a board?
You see, we don't give it to you until after you've said, and then we give you everything immediately and show you everything.
If you remember, we actually give input too and we're part of the grid.
Right.
Comes back as board, FAP.
And then we make final decision.
And then we make the final.
Okay.
So this is still part of the input process.
Part of the input.
I'm okay.
And then you get the grid, you'll see everything after that, as soon as I know what the board is, and the budget buddies will put it all down and then you'll get the whole thing.
In, in the interest of openness, I would just assume, well, aside from whether it's complicated or not, and it is, I would just have, I would just assume have the information presented once to all in the same context and the same forum, so everybody's understanding what's being asked for.
So, uh, it's, I mean, I'm gonna go back to them, so.
I mean, I think it's an advantage, we haven't done that in the past, but if we have the opportunity, I think that's a good thing.
Well, I think what we're really gonna go out and do is do a personal invitation to the community at large, not even parents, to please come, if you're gonna come to one meeting, come to this one. 'Cause you'll get a lot of information. You know, 'cause, um, it's always after the fact that we, that, you know, we start getting questions like that have been answered already, so. We were really gonna, I think the idea was to really push for, for community involvement.
And in, in the aftermath of the, the iPads, and, and I don't, I for one don't think necessarily that allegations were justified, that we were less than transparent, because I think we went out of our way to be transparent with that budget item, but I think.
That perception.
The, yeah, it goes a long way to address the perception.
Okay.
Actually, the reason it went down was because we were transparent. You can find the line, well, really, we were told this by the high school board, it's like, you have a ninety-five thousand dollar item sitting out on this one line. Of course it's gonna draw attention. It was very transparent, from my point of view.
It was probably the right thing to do.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna tell them that, you know, the board would prefer the, if, it can work out, you know, with all the.
Logistics.
Logistics, that they could join you at four thirty and, you know, kind of say, this is our FAP combined board meeting or whatever they wanna do and, and invite people to come to that one, especially parents, if they still wanna go more at night, then we'll do the fifth. We'll just collect the information there.
Okay.
Okay. That was it.
Great. We're out here. Uh, good, so this gets us to, uh, discussion matters. Six one board corner. So, um, I feel, uh, partially guilty about this, but we had been given some information, uh, from, uh, another board member, uh, from another board, Yodora, about, uh, the negotiations process. And I neglected to get that out to the, to the observer. There were, there was an opportunity there, we could've used that as a communication to the community to kinda kick off the negotiations, it may still be relevant.
I think it should.
And if, and if it is, I would suggest that we get back on it and just get that out there.
Take a look at it, I don't think there'll be anything you think needs to change, but not that there's anything to update, I don't, it's been a little bit since I read it.
So I'll send it, yeah, I'll just forward it to the board and ask you for your input and I'll get it in for either this next Tuesday, the Tuesday following, it's not super time sensitive.
Then send it to me.
And then Josh and I will get it together.
Yeah. I'll copy you guys, so you can kinda see where it is, and then you guys comment it on up and fix it all up and we'll send it on out. I don't.
Just probably adding that we've met.
Yeah, right, it's sort of a tense change. So noted.
And the process is going very well so far.
Okay, uh, everybody agree that's, that's what we'll do? Good. Um, Budget Buddies, six dot two, Budget Buddies. All right, guys, I've been doing my part.
Rank it a minute.
Where do we stand?
I think I've got three, I think I, I think I've got three, I've got, uh, Jean McHugh, um, uh, Karen Macklet and Katie, and Katie, uh, Fieldson is going to join us too.
I thought I had one, but you backed out.
Oh, I don't take no for an answer.
Likewise, and I'll, I'll, I'll go, um.
Press the flesh, so to speak. It'd be good to get, to get at least two more, so we have, you know, five on five, but you know, the more, the more, the better.
Sure.
Um, one thing I haven't done quite honest is I didn't, I didn't go back and look at who we had last year and specifically invite them. I gotta go dredge that up, I guess I can ask Sandy to send me the list, 'cause I.
Oh, we have David and who else?
Doris, who was mine, is who I had invited, but you can't do it.
That's fine.
Keith Roy, I think, served for a period.
Yeah, um, I'll get the list and, and send, and send him an email, I can at least do that. But you know, I get five of them, at least. Okay, so you got, you got a short amount of time to pull them on in.
Tomorrow.
There you go. This is like, this is like, uh, political fundraising, you gotta do it tonight, here's your phone.
If you're watching on television, right?
Yeah.
It's a call. Well, we had Mike Hirschman, sure, congrats, it's Mike Hirschman.
Yeah, Mike.
Um, okay, uh, let's move on to action matters. Seven dot one, approve the purchased services, uh, that we are going to, um, uh, use from the CSSU this coming budget year. So, uh, we discussed this last, uh, last meeting, uh, I think, uh, of course we're making decisions, but let's get a motion on the table and then we can do a quick discussion and move forward.
I'll make a motion that we approve purchased services.
Second?
Great, and I may amend, uh, I may have you amended just to, so we have an actual action, which, uh, why don't you, why don't we amend the motion, please, to approve all the purchase services that are offered by the CSSU, because we use them all.
Reflected on.
As ref- as reflected on.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. Okay? Are you good with that? Discussion, so we talked about, we did talk about CY already, that's one of them. You have the list right there, I can't remember off the top of my head and I don't have it in front of me, but transportation and tech services and.
Psych services, ELL, ELP. Is there any compelling reason not to acquire, I know we've talked about transportation, but really we're not in a position.
We're not in a position to, to affect a change there right now, so, you know, we need to take that as a board. Yeah. If that's something we really wanna pursue, I think we need to charge a subcommittee of this board and go start work with the CSSU. Yeah, so maybe we can take that up for discussion next, at the next meeting, but for now, I'm inclined to agree to continue our use of the services as we have.
And the levels will discuss through the budget process.
Right, exactly. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, approving the motion to accept all of CSSU services for the next budget year?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, seven dot two, level three field trips.
So you had four in the packet.
Yep.
Three of them are kind of majors, because they actually are the big out-of-state trips. I think two to, uh, New York City, one to Washington DC. Um, I think, uh, Harbor's going to Washington and Full and Swift are going to New York City, and then we had one that's more of a local trip. Um, and that's, Voyager always does a big trip every other year with their seventh and eighth graders. What they do is an interim trip, which is more like in, you know, in Vermont. And so, um, you have four of them, um, and, you know, I think we'd need a motion, but I, unless you have questions on any one of them?
Let's put the question out and see if we do. So if you have a motion to accept, do you wanna hand it to it?
I, I was wondering whether, I have questions with one of these trips. And, um, I certainly have no questions with three of them. So I'm wondering if we should bifurcate or.
Why don't we, my suggestion would be, let's, let's throw the motion for all of them on and then we can amend or vote it down.
Fair enough.
Fair enough?
Fair enough. So moved, moved to accept the class, class three field trips?
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, Josh, take us through your thoughts.
Um, I, let, let me first by stating that I so appreciate our faculty, 'cause they, they don't have to do this.
Yep.
They put a lot of effort and organize these and, uh, I'm very appreciative of that and, um, so the, the trips to New York and Washington seem to be, uh, very clear in the educational benefits that are being offered. Um, but I am concerned that the off-season, if you will, trip being proposed by Voyager has not articulated a compelling educational purpose with their trip and I for one love the outdoors and camping personally, um, but in the absence of a, uh, a strong academic tie-in, I, I've got real concerns about authorizing this trip and in particular monies to support the trip. And I, I've got a few personal concerns about, you know, we have a short school year as it is. Um, I know that there are extensive field or activities towards the end of the year, Core Olympics and other field days and, um, I'm concerned that there's not enough academic structure to this trip. As articulated.
Yeah.
That's not to say there couldn't be.
It might not be in there, because they talked about tying it into the educational place. What's the name of the place where they go?
Right, but it's, it's not written.
It's not articulated.
I mean, the other trips are very clearly articulated, how this fits into the end of year challenge, grade graders, things like that, it's not in here.
It's not.
Really. Now, it may be there, they just didn't write it out that way.
Are we, I know there's a policy that says we've got to approve these by November, but.
No, it's a procedure, really.
It's a procedure, so we could tell them, come back and give us, explain where the educational tie-in, we're not foreclosing their opportunity.
Right, that's a good idea.
Uh, I tend to agree with you, I'm also concerned, I don't quite know if I understand. Uh, okay, it costs eight thousand dollars, combinations to me, that's fine, um. Maybe I just misread it, but was there an actual duration that they were, like a number of days?
Two days.
Two days?
Two nights.
Two nights. Yeah, um. I'm, I don't think in the past we've ever had one come to us like this to approve, they've been, mostly been out-of-state big trips. Uh, that kinda fit that.
Marshall Lake in the past.
Have we?
And there's been canoeing trips and, yeah, there's been outdoor.
Well, I know that they've done them, like in the past, like the houses have done like an overnight, which is, doesn't have to come to us, in state, in state one overnight, right?
Right.
This one is, I think, meets, yeah, meets the threshold just because it's multiple nights, so that's the, the procedure. But I, I, you know, I think, kinda to Josh's point, there's an intention here that, that I, I have an expectation that these trips are, are culmination trips that are going to, uh, provide a a bit more academic interaction as well as the, you know, community and, and the team-building aspect and the, and all of that good stuff too. So, um, I'd be comfortable asking them to come back and give us a better feel for how that, how they can match some of that experience. I understand that this house is on, prefers to do an every-other-year big trip, but that's, the other houses are doing a big trip every year. So, I, I'm just gonna put it out there, I have equity concerns. Okay, I get that they're going five to eight versus perhaps seven to eight in some, but five to eight in others. This is, I'm just gonna put this as my, my personal board member opinion. I don't like this about the, about level three field trips. This is, they're just, the equity issue comes up and in, in my opinion, that's something we really need to be watchful of, so I'd like to see them come back with something a little more substantive. And I would be willing to accept it if they give me some context about how they're going to meet that for these same students on their big trips every other year. 'Cause I don't see that here, I don't quite get how it all comes together for, 'cause there, there's an assumption that a student's gonna be in their house all four years, which is a big assumption. And that is going, and they're gonna get to go on at least two of these trips, right?
Right.
A big and a little. Whereas the other houses are meeting that equity, 'cause they're going every year.
Except they're only going eighth grade, Harbor.
Harbor and Full.
But they, but they have a big trip every year.
Right.
Right. So if you're a seventh grader, you're gonna have, whether you're in Harbor or out of Harbor, it's gonna be an eighth grade the next year, you're gonna have an opportunity.
Now, this one has that, I mean, it does, 'cause it's seven, eight, so they will, and the, the guideline is one for the four years you're there for sure, and Harbor and Full and Swift, and this house meet it. But this doesn't meet a level three explanation guideline.
Yeah, that's really, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm giving you kind of my back feelings, so you take it back to them and give them my concern, and give them my concerns, I won't speak for you guys, but.
If you wanna do this kind of a trip, it has to have academic, you know, um, strength in it that says, how is this tied to the learning that's occurred during the year? Or they're gonna bring back from this trip and they're gonna do what with it, there's not a lot of academic tie-in. There's more soft things about team-building and things like that, but there's not a lot of academics. And you could have both.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not discouraging the, where they're going and for the duration, I don't necessarily have that issue, it's the content provided and the experience provided that I think we need to, I would like to see more about before I approve it.
So with that in mind, uh, I would move to amend the motion to withdraw the Voyager proposal.
I have one other issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Uh, who's taking, who wants to take cars to Albany and drive? There's one, they were trying to figure that out.
They can't do it.
Okay.
It's not even a board decision, um, we would not let them do it, I mean, oh, we say, is that multiplies the, the chance that an accident could occur, now you've got eight vehicles driving there? We would never approve it.
Uh, yeah, plus the liability issues are a little sketchy.
Yeah, the liabilities on the driver for the first three hundred thousand of your, I mean, it's just not a good practice and we would never approve that. And that's just, the administration would not approve it, I'll just tell them.
They know that?
No, they handed it in, but what I would tell them is that you can't drive. It has to be buses or a train or something, but you can't have, you know, parents driving the kids. We really discourage that.
So, I, in the interest of procedure, I would suggest we amend the proposal to take both of them out, and since we're gonna have the other one come back, have the other one come back with the correct information too.
Which is the other one?
I think it's Harbor, right?
No, Harbor's doing DC again, it's, it's, uh.
With the, I think this, with the full house one, you could just say that the board will not approve. With the stipulation, the board will not approve car transportation.
That's fair. That's fair.
And I, and I, sorry, I just wanna add, um, my perspective as well, like, personal from the board. I have actually been approached just recently about, uh, from a few parents who are concerned about equity. And the equity issue clearly is very sensitive and has been all along, so, um, that this five through eight in some houses versus only eight in other houses is a really sticky thorn.
It is, I understand.
So we, 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 I, I personally disagree with the way we approach this.
I, I think that, uh, I think we can drive that policy some more, but I, I wouldn't be, as much as I wanna see a change, I, I think we shouldn't be hasty, I think we really gotta, we really have to talk that through with the teachers and the houses and, and.
Well, we can talk to them for sure, but I think we also need to be, you know, listen to what parents are saying and there is a concern.
Yeah.
They also have the option to join other trips though, too.
And we have had that happen.
Exactly.
We've actually had students go with another house. Because the friendships cross houses.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't address the equity, I'm sorry. That does not.
It's a step in the right direction and I think we've got a, I think that, I mean, I brought up the equity issue and you brought up the equity issue, equity issue, so we're hearing it and we've got concerns, I think we need to continue to drive it. I think this right here, this discussion we've had tonight is gonna continue to drive that. If we wanna take bigger steps, let's, let's put it down as a discussion item and really think, think through about how that's gonna affect. the, the, the whole thing, cause I, I, I think it, I think it's gonna bring up more issues that we need to think about than, than we realize.
Well, I would like to bring it as a discussion, because I honestly don't think how, I, how, like, if we just say, you know, two-day trips or level three trips should be exclusive for the eighth graders, cause they're outgoing, you know, they're leaving, right? In theory, all students, assuming they stay within our school system, will get to that point, and the equity issue is solved.
But there, there are competing interests, I mean, I, I, we, and I, I think we should bring it up again and have a discussion. I might recall, my first year on the board, we had a, a day really.
It just blew it, guys.
But, you know, there's competing interests of resources, the fact that the teachers volunteer to do this, and so there's, there's a balance that I think we have to keep in mind.
And I gotta say, looking at the parent support for all these trips, it's, it's pretty good, and ones that are on the table.
So, did we determine which house?
That just reflects those who are participating, not those who are in disagreement or not happy with the equity.
So, so in the. Let's, let's, I, I think this is valid discussion, but not, we can't fix it now.
That's fine.
So let's, let's take it, let's not, let's not lose track of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just add it for a next.
So my question is just to bring it back on track, which house, which house is asking for car transport? Did we?
Full.
Harbor, no, Full.
Full wanted to go to Albany.
They had a question on the end of theirs.
Okay, so I think the, 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 the answer there is, is that they need, they need to have.
Alternative mode of transportation.
Yeah, that's.
So, I think if it's agreeable, the motion would be to accept Harbor, Swift, and Full proposals, with the caveat that Harbor?
No, Full.
Full.
Uh, is approved condition on the fact that they can't have.
They can't use personal transportation.
Can't use personal transportation.
Okay. That's the motion. Um, and Cindy's not here, and she was taking notes, so. Somebody needs to write that down. Somebody jot it down, just so when she comes back, we can give her the right verbiage.
Harbor, Full, Swift, and forgive me my memory at this hour.
Harbor, Swift, and Full.
And which one?
Move forward, and Full is the one that needs, uh, will be approved so long as they use collective transportation.
And the good news is they were asking no question, and your answer, the answer's no, cause that's what it said on the back of it.
Unfortunately, that's, those days are gone.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, we don't, I don't think we need to have a discussion on the other house, they can come back, we're giving them the oppo, we'll give them the opportunity to come back. As soon as possible, you know, to, you know, we, there's no reason we can't take a quick action item in, at one of our warned budget meetings, if we need to.
We could do it at the very end, or something.
Yep. Okay. Good.
Good, uh, point of procedure, I think we need to vote.
I think we do. So, all in favor of the motion to, uh, well, the motion to accept Harbor, Full, and, um.
Swift.
Swift, with the caveat that Full needs to use, uh, uh, an approved transportation method. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, getting us through that. So, great, that takes us out of action items and moves us along to the consent agenda, which is in your packet, it's, uh, the last minutes of the last meetings. And, uh.
Move to accept consent agenda?
Um, I talked to Sandy, cause I was noted as making a motion in it, and I wasn't there.
You're good.
I said, boy, if I don't, if I don't have to show up and do it for my dad, so she's gonna fix that.
So she'll fix that, so, so motion, motion to accept the consent agenda. How do you do that? Do we have to pull it out of consent, or what's the technical way to do it?
As amended, or?
If we amend, is it action? Yikes.
Why don't we, I mean, why don't we pull it all out of consent, have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected, and then the, um, what's the other item? It's the, um.
Approve the director's orders.
The director's order.
Great, so we're just, yeah, let's just do that. So, so let's pull this, let's pull this out of consent, back into action. Can I have a motion?
Move to accept the minutes where the edit is noted, uh, by Deb, that she was not, uh, present to make the motion, and that.
The minutes will be updated to reflect such.
Yes.
In a second.
I'll second.
Okay, great.
Are you?
Yes.
Who else would have been?
All in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we needed to pull, uh, uh, the minutes. Uh, we saw field trips, and what's, we'll give you the craziness there, but, uh, we needed to pull consent back into action, cause there was an amazing ghost motion made by Deb, who wasn't even there.
You're good.
That's what I said.
And move to accept the.
Uh, tri, is it the trial balance essentially? Uh, yeah, that's what it is, the director's trial balance, yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are, we are good. That brings us to director's comments. I have none.
I'll just, I'll just repeat for, for the benefit of, um, you returning to the, that, we would like to, uh, discuss in the future, um, again, the equity with, um, field trips.
Yeah.
Maybe after we've, we're done with budget.
I actually think it may be a really good one to talk about at the retreat. Because it gives us some time to really flesh out.
Okay.
Issues, and it gives us a little bit of time, uh, to ask, you know, Walter to maybe do a little, you know, a little discussion amongst the, you know, the community about it too, and we can get some parent input.
Go back to the historical perspective, we've done it before, it said, where did it start, and how did it start, and how did it grow to where it is today?
And I think it would be nice to bring it into F A P, just to hear from parents.
And, you know, I think it's an opport, I, I look at it as an opportunity to go back to the teachers who've been working so hard at this year after year, and to say, hey, this is also an out-of-the-box question. You know, if, if you have a chance to sort of like break out of your, of the way it's always been done, you know, having had the experience of doing it year after year after year like this, how would you approach it? You might get some interesting answers.
I, I really agree with that point, because again, these faculty are doing this on their own time.
Right.
And, um, having them as a player, um, in that decision-making, I think is important.
So, it's just a, just food for thought, so we'll, we'll, let's, let's look towards the, doing that at the retreat. I think that could be a great time to dig into it better. Any other board comments?
Nope.
Uh, mine are, are pretty simple, just a reiteration. I thought the, um, the expo that the F A P and administration put on was wonderful, just wanted to reiterate that. And, uh, also please pass our condolences on to Jackie and her family from the board. And that's what I have.
And we meet tomorrow at five thirty, right?
Yes, so that gets us right here to the meeting date, so tomorrow is not four thirty, it's five thirty, it got pushed back an hour, and that.
Thank you for accommodating.
Thank you, Josh.
Actually works out for a few people, so that's good. Um, so that's, that's tomorrow, uh, then.
To that, to that end.
Yep.
Um, to the extent we wanna push all our budget meetings back to five thirty, I would be very pleased. I know that may cause problems for others, but I just wanna throw that out there. If it works for others, it would certainly work for me. How do we say it? So noted?
Good, all right, we'll, we'll, we'll throw it out there, but, uh, so that's, that's tomorrow night. Well, we, I do know we've got at, at least recruited three Budget Buddies, so hopefully we'll see them come. Uh, November twenty-first is the budget meeting after that. Uh, Josh said he won't be able to attend, so we noted that. Uh, the December twelfth meeting is now December nineteenth. And then, uh, everything from there is as-is, as far as I know. Okay? Okay, so at this point, um, I think that, uh, we need a motion to go into executive session to do our discussion on negotiations, bring everybody up to date, and, uh, since we have no further action items, and I doubt we'll take any, we will adjourn right after that, so we don't necessarily need to return here to this room. So with that, we're, uh, done with the public portion of the meeting.